Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Uh, next is review and we receive a review correspondence have three police calls, one in Orland on eleven seventeen, another one in Orland eleven twenty-five, and one on Broner eleven twenty-three. All set on those? A good job by our folks on covering those, obviously. Ordinances to consider introduce, we have none. Uh, discussion items, first one is Main Street Bucksport funding request. Ron or John Paul?
Ryan, you're on mute.
There we go. Okay, you did it. Sorry, everyone. Uh, first thing I should probably tell you is that, uh, my iMac computer here that I'm looking at, I, it fell off my desk today and broke the glass, so I'm not exactly sure how it's gonna work, but, um, anyway, um, we made a request, or at least, uh, per, uh, Rich's suggestion, we made a request, uh, at the, um, Economic Development Committee meeting, sort of explaining our finances. Now, I wrote a letter to Sue, I don't know if you've all gotten a copy of that or not. So I won't read it to you, but essentially to recap, um, we, uh, from the beginning have pretty much followed the, uh, suggested funding model, uh, that was given to us by the Main Street America Program, um, through the main downtown center, and that's to, um, seek municipal funding, raise funding through fundraising, uh, and through events, and also to seek grants. Um, we've done that through the years with, uh, we've had continuous support from the town, and we've, um, hosted a number of events, we've fundraised for various items, um, through the years. And we've also received a fairly large number of grants, you know, from the time of our existence. COVID came along and it pretty much wiped out, uh, the event source of our funding, which we, uh, pretty much every event we did become positive from. It also, um, affected our, uh, fundraising, uh, to the extent that, um, during COVID, we decided to do a program since we pretty much couldn't be out there in person. We came up with a program called Bucks Bucks, which you all were supportive of, and the community at large was very generous, and we raised really a lot of funds, a lot more than we normally did. But we also made a commitment in that, that we would distribute all the funds. So we didn't take it in any administrative, it was all done by volunteer work. Uh, we raised a little over thirty-two thousand dollars. And we supported a coupon that, uh, was, could be used in a number of local, uh, downtown merchants, and it essentially, uh, backend funded a twenty-dollar coupon that people purchased for ten dollars. Uh, so that went to a pretty large number of people in the community and also helped them, um, during COVID, which was a difficult time. But the program lasted, um, you know, a little over a year and a half, we did two rounds of fundraising to raise that money. Many people gave twice, and sort of right towards the end, uh, actually, it was sort of in the beginning of the end, we decided that we would not have an annual appeal, which we normally do, and that raised usually a fair amount of, uh, funds, people supported us. But we just felt at the time that it was maybe a bridge too far, that you can go to the well too much. And so we had gotten a PPP loan, we looked at our finances and we thought we can get it through because, um, we'll have two thousand and twenty-one, we can get all the events going again, and, uh, raise more funding. Well, that didn't happen. You know, a good example might be the Alamo, we had, uh, sponsored the International Maritime Film Festival for, I think, three or four years. Um, the year before during COVID, we ran it virtually, and we actually made some money on that, and it was successful. We planned to have it in the fall again at the Alamo. We weren't able to do that because the Alamo opened, and due to low participation, they had to close. But by the time sort of all that happened, um, we really couldn't get together with a virtual program again. So we postponed it, uh, thinking that the Alamo might open at a later date, because it was more successful with the Alamo, but of course it didn't, and here we are now. So looking ahead, uh, before the end of the year, we felt we were gonna have a shortfall. Now, we haven't been static about that, we, uh, had sent our annual, uh, fundraising campaign is going on right now. Money is coming in, that's certainly gonna help with the shortfall. Uh, John Paul, uh, submitted for a grant with the Maine Community Foundation, and that was awarded last week, that's gonna help close the gap. So, in all, um, honesty to everybody, the gap might be less than the five thousand, but when we went to the, Economic Development Committee, it looks like it was gonna be more than that. So Rich suggested, since the chamber gone away, uh, the full one percent that, um, groups like ours, um, were to seek funding from, wasn't used with as much during COVID because, um, things like the chamber no longer existing and things like that. So that's sort of the state of affairs. Um, in the middle of it all, we, uh, changed, uh, executive directors, which, sort of, I know Kathy was involved in our search committee and, uh, so that made it tough for the person coming in just to get up to speed and everything else, so that's sort of where the organization's at. And, uh, you know, if we, if we don't on our own get enough funding, then, you know, we're not sure we can continue. So, that's what the request's about. Um, like I said, we appreciate, uh, what the town has done for us in the past, and will certainly, uh, no matter what, continue to, you know, carry forward. And if we can scrape together the funds, um, we'll do so.
Thanks, Ron.
If anybody has any questions, um...
Yeah, if you have, uh, if you have a question, just raise your hand and I'll, I'll, I'll spot you. Danny?
So Sue, is, this is something that we could use part of our ARP funds for, right? Since this is COVID-related?
You're muted, Sue.
You could do that, but you would need to do an ordinance as to how nonprofits or businesses would go about applying for this kind of money. I'm not sure it's possible to just pick one, I think that the reason for ordinance is, is that so it defines the rules for anyone who might make an application.
I, I can add one thing, um, earlier in the year, I think in the spring, but it was also exactly at the same time that we were, um, moving from one executive director to the other. We came to, uh, the town with a, again, we went to the Economic Development Committee. We had what we thought was a good idea to sort of continue the idea of Bucks Bucks to promote downtown. And, uh, you approved three thousand dollars for us to, you know, try to get that off the ground, but the, the truth of it was that by the time we made the switch over and everything, we were pretty late into the season, and part of that involved, um, distributing these coupons to people staying at the motel or Airbnbs. This was a participatory, uh, coupon somewhat different than the other one, financially participatory, by the merchants involved, um, but it still needed to be backstopped somewhat by, uh, funding. And the three thousand was to sort of kick it off, but then we would go into a fundraising mode. That was never used, it certainly was not directed for, you know, operations for Main Street Bucksport, but I would just point that out.
Sue?
I mean, we're gonna go at it still, we just had our board meeting last night, and the plan is, uh, you know, do it right, take our time, and it was a three-pronged program, still support people in the town, uh, support, uh, visitors that were actually staying in the town, and the third spike was to attract visitors that requested from tours and in the gift shop at Fort Knox, where can we go to shop, get something to eat? And that's the plan again, to do it again the same way.
Sue?
You had indicated, Ron, that, um, John Paul got a grant recent, last week for the Maine Community Foundation? Was that Maine Community, was that from Hancock County?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Sue, you're correct.
Okay, that was my question, is the, that, I, I know that Hancock County had a fund for nonprofits that, um, had lost revenue during, I, I was just, the, if it was the Maine Community Foundation, I was gonna suggest that it, that Hancock County get an application as well because they have that program.
No, you're correct, but I think I get confused sometimes because we're looking everywhere we can, and Mary's working on a innovation grant, uh, at the Maine Community Foundation, we discussed it some more last night. And, uh, we also looked into the monies, the COVID monies that the state of Maine received, uh, nonprofits qualified, but John Paul looked at it close, very closely, and he found qualified, so...
Any other questions? Ron, how much was your PPP loan for?
I think we, we got it twice, um, John Paul, you can maybe chime in, but I believe it was fifty-two hundred.
Uh, yeah, fifty-two hundred.
Total?
Yeah. Uh, no, we, we got it, we got two different loans, and it totaled, um, about ten thousand with the two of them.
And has, and has that been, um, has that been approved?
Yeah, they've both been forgiven. One, one was reduced by a thousand, so I guess in total we got about nine thousand.
Yeah, it was the, sort of, the emergency funding you could get, the thousand, you had to... But it's, it certainly was a big help, um, because this is really, uh, you know, kind of two years of the, you know, starting with the, uh, Alamo virtual, now it's coming around to a second time, and, you know, other things will start to be there too, we just, you know, certainly the bridge the gap race is back, but, you know, they did run the one in Millinocket, so I think that probably will go. And we did sort of, in, in a smaller scale, get the arts festival, um, going again this summer, which according to at least the merchants down at that end of Main Street was quite successful for them.
I would, I would be remiss if I didn't ask, what, what are your thoughts on asking for funding coming up?
Well, I mean, I like to be optimistic and think that, you know, we'll be on this, I mean, everybody wants to be beyond it, and, you know, I know it's still sort of raging, but, you know, and people, and, and people are certainly, the vaccination rates have gone up, so the combination of, you know, a number of people getting it, it's, it's, uh, my guess is from what I've read, it's gonna get better, I, I certainly hope so. So I don't think, at this point, it would be the right thing to do to say we're planning ahead that, you know, we'll have another shortfall, I think we can, Mary will have her feet under her, you know, the, everybody out there wants it to go. But, and then, you know, the other thing was, we thought that, uh, during this summer, this past summer, just with discussions with Sue, and I think even when we talked with the board, that the marketing plan was gonna kick in, and there was talk, I mean, there's nothing said, but that maybe we, you know, we certainly wanted to support that and help with that, and there might be instances of that where the town would almost contract with us, um, to help that along, which, you know, that would help us fund ourselves in those efforts as well. One of the things you have to, in many grants, there's very little administrative money. It's just, you, you get the money, and you complete the project, but it doesn't necessarily set aside any money for you to do it. So, not always the case, and sometimes it's minimal, but, I mean, I'm on the Alamo Board and, uh, I mean, the Northeast Resort Film, and they get some really big grants, it sounds great, but the administrative part is figured at cost. You have to send what you pay people.
Jimmy, did you have a question?
Uh, yes, uh, John Paul, uh, gave us a, a few different numbers for the amount of money that the, uh, grant was for. I just wanted to know if that was something that he was taking off the top of his head, or was it something he, he pulled out of some books that he has there to refer to?
No, that, so, we're throwing around a lot of grants, the, um, the only grant we received that was talked about tonight was the one from Hancock County, and that was two thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. The PPP loans, which I think you may be talking about, Jim.
Yeah.
We received one in, in two thousand for, uh, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but, uh, I believe it was just a little bit over five thousand dollars. We received another one in two thousand twenty-one for fifty-two hundred dollars, but the whole, uh, eleven thousand two hundred, or ten thousand two hundred was not forgiven, uh, uh, only nine thousand two hundred of it was forgiven. So, the net of those two over the two years was, um, nine thousand two hundred.
Okay.
Jim, the fifty-two hundred was act, the first time, or, or, around five thousand was two grants, it was an emergency thousand dollar grant plus the other one.
Okay, thank you.
Not grant, but loan. And the thousand had to be paid back. Which we did do.
Other questions? Sue?
Um, the, this letter was received, it's dated the seventh, but is the five thousand dollars still the same number, even though you got the grant from Hancock County for, twenty-seven, whatever the two thousand and change was, does that mid, offset this five, or is that, you knew that was coming, so the five is what's after that happens?
I, it, we were submitted, I don't know if we were even submitted, it was kind of a real quick affair, John Paul came to us. But, um, I'm gonna say when we had our la- last board meeting, it was not in the picture. Um, and at that board meeting, I'd have to go back and look at the minutes, but I think we asked John Paul for rough calculation, and at that point, there were a couple of things up in the air because there was some promises made by some of the things that the, quote, Downtown Merchants Association was doing, that Mary trying to get involved, ended up saying, yeah, we, we'll do that and we'll pay for it, so we did do that. So at that time, if I remember correctly, and John Paul can correct me if not, we thought we might be as much as seven thousand dollars. But of course, we didn't know what we were gonna raise at the end of the year in a fundraising campaign, and that's, um, we didn't get a report on that last night. So, based on the November board meeting, when we started the process of going to economic development, I would say the five thousand, because there was a lot of discussion about, well, we're gonna have the year-end fundraising, maybe we don't, we shouldn't, we should keep it as skinny as possible, um, so it's sort of a moving target, Sue. I would say that, at the time, we didn't know about the twenty-seven fifty, now we do. But we don't know the amount that we're gonna raise on our own for an annual campaign is unknown. Because it's, we're in the midst of it now, so, I would say the best answer I could give, at the time, we were cutting it really tight. Trying to look ahead to, we, at that meeting, we also discussed, we have sort of a shortened virtual film festival, which I think last year might have raised fifteen hundred dollars in February. So, yes and no would be my answer.
So, the, the other question, and, and you mentioned the three thousand dollars that we had authorized, um, for the other Bucks Bucks. Is that included in this shortfall, or have you added that?
No, we just, that's sitting on the sidelines because we couldn't, we didn't, we felt it might be a waste of money because it was really the preamble to a bigger program that we would fundraise for, and it was, it didn't make any sense to start that in July. And that's really when maybe we could have.
So I get, I, my, my, I guess my, my question is, if, if we've allocated three, and you got this grant for twenty-seven hundred, does that put you, if, if you got that three issued, you know, for, for, for the shortfall, would that put you guys at the number that you needed to be at?
If the year-end campaign is, uh, successful, or the tune of probably a couple thousand dollars, which I, I think it might be, I, I know for a fact that, uh, I made a donation, my business made a donation, and there's probably some other people did too, but, I wish I can give a clearer answer, Peter, because, you know, we have things that, we've, um, three new members joined the board yesterday, um, we started a, um, I gotta get this right, we adopted the beautification, uh, program, downtown beautification program that Meg Kay started, and under our committee structure, I think it falls under, uh, design. So we initiated a, uh, design committee, uh, yesterday, and, last night. And Meg's gonna hand it up, she's gonna get some, she has some people, she said, that would join that committee from the, um, town, and it's gonna move forward, she has lots of ideas, and of course, you know, many of them will have to fundraise for, so, uh... I guess that my fairest answer would say, if you allocated the three thousand to, um, uh, general administrative expense instead of the program, um, and the twenty-seven fifty, the answer would be yes.
My, my, my concern, Ron, to you is, I don't believe that we can take any action on this tonight, you know, for, for added requests, and we're not meeting again until January.
Yeah, our cash flow is fine, one, because in all nonprofits, grants are mixed in with all your funds, I mean, it's crazy, me as a businessperson, when I saw it at the Alamo, I was like, what? You know, and so we are carrying a fair amount of funds still for museum in the streets, because those signs haven't been made, so from a purely cash on hand, we're fine.
What, what, what I would, I, I think, and I think maybe what some of the council would like to see is that on our January, I think it's the thirteenth meeting, if we could have a true, true breakdown of, of your, your budget where you stand on that meeting there, taking into account that, that the three thousand that we've already allocated could be part of that.
Yeah.
I think that would give us a, a better handle on where we're at and where we're gonna, what we're gonna be looking for, and give you guys a better handle, I, I, you know, I, I can appreciate back of the napkin stuff, but I think there's folks that would like to actually see where we're at.
I, I, I think that's reasonable, what do you say, John, you're the, John Paul, you're the treasurer, um...
Yeah, you know, um, like Ron said, our cash flow at this point is all right, whether there's enough money there, the, the projection at this point is, it's tenuous if, um, until we go around the next ask from the town. So, whether we have enough money to get to June or not is dependent on a lot of things. Right now, it looks like, no, we would not, but certainly we have enough to get to January, February, you know, it, um, when I went, when we went to the economic development, we, we asked for, for five and said, if we look like we were doing better by April, when we go to ask for our town request next year, it, we would re, you know, possibly reduce that, depending on where we're at. But we're fine, Peter, with what you're suggesting, come back and we'll know at, in January, how we did on our annual appeal. The one question I have for Sue is, that three thousand dollars we're talking about was tentatively coming out of the, um, the Silvernail money that was kind of earmarked for the town, I'll call for COVID relief, and I, you know, I don't know particulars about what that money was earmarked for, so, you know, when we asked for it before, we felt it was part of this next round of Bucks Bucks, which is kind of COVID relief, so, I don't know whether you, you know, the council could say, um, three thousand of that could go towards our administrative cost.
And again, this cash, uh, shortfall is gonna happen in the spring.
Yeah, I, I, and I, and I think everybody appreciates the good work and the reasons that things didn't happen, and I, and I think, I don't think there's anybody here that doesn't want to support, I think it's, if we could just see some, the, the, the whole picture, just so we know, and I appreciate what you said, John Paul, about if things look good, coming back when, when the ask happens, um, and if things are, are there, you may not ask for as much, or we may be able to do something different, but I think if we all could just see where, where we stand, you know, on January thirteenth, I think it would, it would just help clear the picture, maybe.
Yeah, that would be fine, and I, I, I totally agree, regardless of what, you know, may happen, if we get other funding for, from the town, we would redirect any funds, um, that were accessed either into a law or ask, or into a program like the, the coupons.
And then that will, and that, and that may also give Sue a chance to talk to, to Andy and see if he's okay, if, if that money got directed, if that's something, if that's a question that we can even ask, Sue.
You're muted again, Sue.
I know, I, I was trying to find the button, I apologize. Um, I, I could certainly, um, I'd be happy to ask if, you know, we tweak that three to some, um, COVID-related purpose, but not for distribution in the community directly, but for administrative costs, I'm not sure. I mean, the, his donation was to match our efforts to put money in the community. And I mean, it does in one way, but I would be happy to ask them. And I think that if there was, you know, a financial presentation in January that included the fundraising effort will have been underway for some time, a little bit idea sort of what, how that is trending, I would think, if you've sent out your fundraising letters. And the second thing is, it would help understand what the prognosis is for going forward. Because one of my questions was, filling a hole to get us to the end of the year isn't a solution if there's nothing that can carry it forward. And so if there's something that sort of shows what that looks like, and, you know, the idea of giving $5,000 and that gets you to the end of this year, but there's no path forward, I, we have to weigh on whether that's a good investment or bad one, you know. So I, I think that if there's sort of a spreadsheet that just shows more clearly for, as a numbers person, it's hard for me to see things without a spreadsheet. That's just the way it is.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. The other, perhaps the other thing I would add, and it was in the letter, but Brooke and Mark gave us an in-kind donation of the space that we were housed in for quite a while. And their circumstances changed, so we lost that. And one of the other expenses that came up was, we felt it was important, at the time Mary came, she didn't have permanent housing. So we didn't know where she'd end up. And we felt having that presence was, in the downtown area, was somewhat important. So we worked with Reverend Brown and got into Brown Hall, which has been a great, you know, partnership. Because he's trying to get that into a community center. And there's a lot of things going on over there, so it's a good place to be. And the rent was real reasonable, it was 300 a month. So church could use it as well. So it's money well spent.
Great. Any councils have any comments or questions? Is everybody okay with what I kind of posed there? Rich, I saw you pop up. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Hello, yeah. I apologize for popping on late. I was listening on the phone at one point. But the guys did come to and presented at the Community Economic Committee meeting. I understand what everybody's saying on either side. It seems like the Main Street Bucksports run into the same thing that happened to the Chamber. They were rent-free. Rent wasn't pre-planned at the beginning because the space was free, same thing with the Chamber. And then it seems like it's that expense that wasn't accounted for, because there was no need to account for it, that's come in. That's helped to get us there, as well as, and I believe this was mentioned, I heard at the beginning, when I turned in, was the fact that they did give up their annual appeal last year for the betterment of the town businesses, as well as citizens, by coming up with the Bucks Box program. So I understand wanting to see a spreadsheet. Definitely important to keep going with the Main Street program. It's been alive in Bucksport since at least 2010. Dave Mylin had, even though there wasn't an active group pursuing it, we've had that designation since then. And with the new leadership and things starting to turn, we've seen more events coming on. The Bridge the Gap race will be May 7th this year. That's put on by Main Street Bucksport. The Arts Festival was back. And I'll work with Main Street Bucksport to get financials for you guys for that January meeting.
All right, thanks, Rich.
The other thing I might give you is just a little history on our annual appeal. It's generally a couple thousand dollars.
I appreciate that. All right. Anything else from anybody? Yeah, John Paul?
Yeah, Peter, just, it's more of a question for the council. You know, I know in the past, we've done a much better job of of making regular reports to you, you know, what we're doing. And I think we've been more silent in the last, you know, half a year. We recognize that and want to get back to more regular report outs to the council of what we're working on and, you know, what's in the, you know, out there and whatnot. So, you know, I'll offer that before you ask for it, Peter.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, I appreciate. I mean, everywhere and everybody, John Paul, has been running silent just because of what we've been dealing with. So I appreciate that, and I know everybody does. So thank you.
And the last thing I want to add is, one of the things that also has affected us is, in small ways, the downtown merchants contributed before. I mean, there was a brochure that Brooke did every year that was wholly paid for by the merchants. And that has become a tougher sell lately, for obvious reasons. So that's one more little chink in the, trying to do things and finding the funds to do them.
Well, I think one of the items that we're gonna discuss here in just a little bit about a new website may, may help with some of that stuff with merchants and things like that. So we may, we may have some answers to help with that stuff, too, with the merchants piece. And I realize that that may take away a little bit from your thing, but again, if you guys and Rich all work together with this, it may all be better off.
Anything that helps anyways.
Yep.
Super.
All right, anything else? John Paul, Ron, appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
See you guys in January, okay?
Yeah, we'll be back.
Thank you. All right. Next item is agenda items. First is to approve, resolve 2022-24 to approve the municipal review committee voting ballot. Council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Jake?
Counselor Eastman?
Approve.
Counselor Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonnet?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counselor Ormsby?
Approve.
Counselor Downs?
Approve.
Counselor Rankin?
Approve.
I just lost my space here. Hang on, sorry. Next is resolve 2022-25 to approve the sale of the town floats. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Comments, questions? Mike, do you have something?
No, I just hear, in case anyone had any questions.
I think it's a good thing that we could sell them, right?
Oh, yeah, it is. In fact, it's really good. They'll be gone instantly.
Perfect. All right, nice job. Thank you. Jake?
Counselor Eastman?
Approve.
Counselor Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonnet?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counselor Ormsby?
Approve.
Counselor Downs?
Approve.
Counselor Rankin?
Approve.
Next is resolve 2022-26 to approve hazard pay for the public safety personnel. Council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Comments? Sue?
Um, the, okay, I'm not muted. The resolve outlines the proposed distribution of this, which is $1,000 for full-time eligible employees and 500 for part-time eligible employees. And when I say eligible employees, there's a period of service that's required dates that people work between in order to qualify. And regular work, as opposed to one day in 18 months, in terms of the definition of part-time. The county program that was going to be a two-for-one match, they limited to a total of $40,000 for any community that participated. And my proposal is that that match will be used for the full-time personnel that worked throughout this pandemic at a two-to-one, resulting with a 1,000 from the town and 2,000 from the county for this, since they were the ones, I've had questions about what this means and why I feel strongly about this. And I've explained it this way. While it's arguable that people such as myself or others are essential employees, I was essential before the pandemic started, and I would hope that I'll be essential when the pandemic's over. That's my role, I'm supposed to do this. But during this whole thing, I've never been at risk. I've not been the ones dressed up in a Tyvek suit before there's any such thing as a vaccine, going in to handle medical care for people when we really didn't know what we were facing. And so for me, that's what this hazard pay, which is one of the few things in the ARPA legislation that is very clearly stated as an allowed use, is hazard pay for first responders. What I'm proposing uses 5.5% of our allocation. There will be $491,000 remaining if the council approves this for all sorts of other projects. This is on tonight's agenda because the period of time that's covered by hazard pay has been over for a long time. This is, this is an impending issue. It's not something that they're waiting for the end of something to determine who's qualified. That's already in statute. So this is my proposal, and I'm hoping that the council will support this.
Any other questions? Comments? I will just note that the survey that we sent out to get community input, this had, was ranked as the second most important use of the funds, so. All right, Jake?
Counselor Eastman?
Approve.
Counselor Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonnet?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counselor Ormsby?
Approve.
Counselor Downs?
Approve.
Counselor Rankin?
Approve.
Next is resolve 2022-27 to approve the development of a new town website. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Questions? Rich, you wanna kind of go over this real quick, or?
I have our head of IT, Jim Morrell, on the line as well. It was a committee of five of us. A lot of these meetings happened virtually while the office was closed. I'd like to thank every member of the committee who was able to tune into each of those. Some companies we had more than one meeting with, we wanted to make sure we did our due diligence. Jim came up with a great matrix for us to use, so that way, there were no biases. Everything that was available is what should have been scored. The company that we have selected is ReVise. They met everything that we needed. If you're interested in a site that they created, one of the ones here in Maine, one of the many they've done, is the city of Saco, Maine. It's gonna be great for the users on the backend, such as the town employees. It'll be a great interface for the citizens. And I'll stop there, because I don't know much more about computers than Jim can say, even with anything else.
I appreciate that Jim came up with the matrix and not you, so that does make me feel better already.
Me too.
Jim, anything you want to add?
Yeah, just overall, we did a thorough process. We want to make sure that what we have is something that was going to advance. Couple of the highlights I'd like to point out is, we talked about ADA back in 2017 when I joined you folks at the table. That was something that wasn't a consideration and kind of off-railed where you folks were, and I think it's gonna pay off for itself. Not only will they release an ADA compliance to us, they do ADA quarterly newsletters. We can reach out to them anytime. They won't do a site evaluation, that's actually quite thorough, and a third-party company will do that for us. But they bring us back on track if we had training. Highlight for ReVise was, not only do they do initial training with us, but we can literally request live, not just YouTube videos, not just documentation, if we want another training on a topic, and they'll set that up for us based on their trainer accessibility. And that's the duration. It also gives us another four-year revision. So the process we just went through to select a vendor, do a redesign, get it deployed, they will work with us to do another revision in four years, based on our annual cost. There's no additional 5,000, 10,000, $15,000 again. And that is perpetual, for as long as you stay with them. Every four years, we'll be on a reset cycle.
Great, thanks. Any questions from anybody? All right, Jake?
Counselor Eastman?
Approve.
Counselor Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonnet?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counselor Ormsby?
Approve.
Counselor Downs?
Approve.
And Counselor Rankin?
Approve.
Nice job, guys. Next is resolve 2022-28 to approve the purchase of a pickup for Public Works. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? I guess one of the questions I had, Sue, I noticed that this is replacing a two-wheel drive. I'm just kind of curious why, why we're upgrading to such a big vehicle if we're replacing the two-wheel drive.
Matt Pierce is on here someplace. Jay is trying to get on but can't get on with his phone. He's exhibiting extreme frustration. But Matt is called in. Matt, can you answer this?
Yes, I can. We had two-wheel drives for years, and they've just proven to be taxis. So we've switched over to getting the four-wheel drives because we can have plows on them, and we can use them year-round to do work.
Thank you. Any other questions?
But by that reasoning, we need additional plows?
Well, we need a spare for what we have, and this just gives another seat for another vehicle for someone to drive to plow snow with, that, instead of just being a taxi to run around in.
Okay, thank you.
How many, how many trucks do you have right now in your fleet of trucks when it comes to pickups?
When it comes to pickups, I have the pickup that Jay drives, and we have two one-tons. And we picked up a pickup from the school that they replaced, and we rebuilt it, and we used that one with a plow as well.
How many, how many of those are four-wheel drives? Just one?
This one that we're replacing is our last two-wheel drive. Everything else is four-wheel drive.
Any other questions? Jake?
Counselor Eastman?
Approve.
Counselor Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonnet?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counselor Ormsby?
Approve.
Counselor Downs?
Approve.
Counselor Rankin?
Approve.
Next item is resolve 2022-29 to approve the purchase of a new ambulance. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions?
Just to clarify, Sue, this was the one we had anticipated in the budget and planned for, correct?
This is the one that when we talked about that we're going to spread out the payments over the five years until it needs to be replaced again when we get it. The purpose of this ambulance being on the agenda this weekend, we have public safety people on here who can address this as well, is that it's an eight-to-12 delivery window in order to get the next ambulance. And in order to have it, hopefully, by this time next year, it needs to be ordered now, or soon, in order to do that. But the funding and the delivery and all that would not occur Now, or, or soon in order to do that, but the, the funding and, and the um, delivery and all that would not occur until the next fiscal year. It's a matter of, I believe. Deputy Chief Denning, are you on here someplace?
Yes.
Okay, I, am I stating this correctly that there's an eight to twelve month delivery window?
Correct, it's gonna take eight to twelve months for delivery. The payment and delivery will not be till after July first of twenty twenty-two. It will be on next year's budget, we're just trying to, with the way things are now, ordering things, you almost have to get in line and. They put you in the assembly line. So i- it just, it, it takes a long time now. So we want to make sure we replace our ambulance three in a timely fashion.
Deputy Chief, is this the, the van? The van ambulance that you showed me that's all starting to all rot out?
Yep, it is, it's a two thousand eight. And it's got over a hundred and sixty-one thousand miles on it. And it's a six-liter diesel engine and it's had two, two engine jobs in its lifespan, so. We really don't want to be keeping it too much longer.
I- is this kind of the progression, we're gonna go to these, the bigger four-wheel drive ambulance?
A- absolutely, the four-wheel drive vehicles are, I, I would not go back to two-wheel drive vehicle anymore. Four-wheel drive's the way to go.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
How much, how much you think, and I know you're not gonna really notice right off the top of your head, but how much you think we're gonna get on a sale for that two thousand eight? Any ballpark figures?
I, 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 I think we're gonna have a hard time to sell it because. The, the six-liter motor. Is really not desirable.
Yeah.
Um, if, I, I, I wanna be careful not to put that out there for when we go, go to put it out to bid, but. Um, you know, I, I, I would think maybe. In a, a thousand, possibly more.
Yeah.
So Michael, I saw on one of the quotes that they were gonna give us a six-thousand-dollar trade-in allowance. But this, but the one that we're buying it from is not giving us any trade-in?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Was there, was, was it asked, I'm, and I'm just asking why one wouldn't, one?
Well, the, the company that would give us the trade-in. Is Autotronics and they're out of Bangor, they have. Rental ambulances up there that if your vehicle is in for repair or is damaged, they rent those. So I would surmise they're gonna put that in their rental fleet and, and use it for a while.
So we wanna sell it to them for five thousand if you think we can only get a thousand?
I have a question. Is there, is there any particular reason that this particular van, this size? Is any more expensive than any other van, because it's hard for me to believe that a business owner buying a van similar to this. Would, would have to pay over two-hundred thousand dollars to replace one vehicle in his fleet. It's hard to stay in business.
Yeah, th- these are not vans, these are F-four-fifty chassis with boxes on the back, Jim.
Exactly, they're an F-four-fifty chassis, that's what you're buying.
Yep.
Okay.
The, the prices that you see are. Are what they're going for today and. Those are mid-line prices, if we went with. A higher-top ambulance like a Braun or something like that, they're two-fifty, two-sixty for us.
I understand, I understand that an ambulance is an expensive piece of equipment, but that chassis is no more than a Ford chassis.
Yep. It's all, it's all what you have in the back of the ambulance.
Yeah, I don't believe this is just for the truck, this is for the full ambulance with equipment in the back. And I researched this throughout the state this week and I can tell you that a neighboring town just paid two-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars. For an ambulance that is similar to this, so.
Is our expectation that the two thousand fourteen that will now be number three will. Come do when, when this one is basically the year is paid off and then we'll be right back again for the same thing? Be about a twelve-year process, is, that's about what this one is, it's twelve or thirteen years old? Or are we looking at we can get a couple more years out without any payments on an ambulance, you think? And I, I realize I'm, I'm asking to look five years down the road, so.
I- i- it's hard to, it's hard to, to look down the road like that, I can tell you this, today's mileage. Our frontline ambulance is a two thousand nineteen and it's got over eighty, eighty-two thousand miles on it, so. Where we're going on more calls.
How, how many miles does this one have on it?
A hundred and six, over a hundred and sixty-one thousand.
And what does the middle one have, Mike, do you know?
Hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Yeah. Sue?
I've been um, discussing this with uh, Public Safety um, Director Gagin and Deputy Chief. Then in regard to the. The, how we're, we've been replacing them um, in order to um, stay current, our runs are up. That, over the past. Year and a half, we're, we're, we're going in a, in an upward direction and, and we're using three ambulances more often than not. Which hasn't always been the case and the uh, replacement window or, or how often do you buy a new ambulance? What was that extended to, Mike, we were supposed to, the idea was that, I, I think every. Seven years, six years, I, I, I don't know, it, it's.
Five, five years.
Five years, but that isn't what happened and that, and we got kind of out of sync, but the. The proposed financing on this is a five-year window so that it, it, it will be an ongoing payment. You will be in the process of buying an ambulance. With a payment every year as opposed to the need to do. Two-hundred-and-thirty or forty or fifty thousand dollars out of one budget because it's more manageable. Budget impact-wise to do that than it is to, to do this brainwave of big, nothing, big, nothing. Um, and we've sort of used that methodology to keep our fleets. Um, current and our equipment new um, are in good operational condition, but the. Yeah, the. The idea that this isn't gonna be, you see an ambulance and then you're not gonna see another one for ten years, that. So it, it will really likely be um. That, you know, every four to five years you're going to be voting to do it and going into that fifth year, just continuing a, a payment structure. To support an annual ambulance payment.
Thank you. Any other questions? Jake?
Counselor Eastman.
Approve.
Counselor Morrison.
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonette.
Approve.
Mayor Stewart.
Approve.
Counselor Ormsby.
Approve.
Counselor Downs.
Approve.
Counselor Rankin.
Approve.
Next item is resignations appointments, um, we have a resignation of Olivia Ford as a shelter assistant and then also an appointment of Sue Barnum. I assume to take her place as a shelter assistant. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. Questions? Is that started yet Chief or?
Uh, yes, Mrs. Barnum was actually in today to meet with Deputy Chief Winchester to go over the paperwork, so it is in the works.
And on a side note, is there, are we still on for having a grand tour of that place on the twenty-seventh, I think, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think as soon as we're able to meet as a group, I think we can do it.
So I think, I think we talked about the twenty-seventh with an infrastructure committee at six, so, that's twenty-seventh of January.
Six o'clock, yep.
Yeah, okay. All those in favor? Thank you, opposed? I'm gonna uh, just take a mayoral. Privilege here for a second, we have town manager report next, but before Sue gives her report, I'd like to. Go around the room with the other department heads that are here, just uh, they, they work hard and they, they all do good jobs on the report, so. Do you have, if folks have any highlights or anything, Chief, I'll start with you, if you got any highlights or anything you wanna talk about?
Uh, just, I'm sure you all got my report, um, and I started it out a little bit different, I had the two guys that actually saved the life, um. We don't put that in their logs, that's really what we get paid to do, to be honest with you, but that call in particular was. Definitely one of those calls, it was out of the ordinary for those two guys and. When the paramedics did show up, because we had another two or three ambulance runs going on at the time and they did show up. Um, both of them wrote letters, landed in my office and said that, you know, through equipment that the town is, is given. For us to do our job and the training that those two guys had, they said it was just to walk in on that and they're the highly-trained personnel that do that job. They said it was just amazing to watch those two guys, so that was very, a very, very good job, um. And I believe that, that, that person is still alive to this day because of that and had a major, major heart issue that probably. He shouldn't have lived and they truly saved that guy's life, so. Um, that's the big highlight of, of my, my re-
Yeah, Michael?
Yes, uh, so I, I wanna. Talk about that call just a little bit, I don't even think Director Gagin knows this, we've been so busy the last day, I haven't had a chance to tell him. The update on that CPR uh, person. Uh, he was discharged from the hospital yesterday and he walked out the front door, so, great news. Nice job.
David, do you have anything you wanna add?
Uh, the only thing I'll add to what they've mentioned is uh. Couple months prior to that call, we had three of our members involved in a lifesaving effort on the bridge, so that's five in a year.
Nice job. Caitlin, good to see you, you got anything you wanna talk about?
Um, nothing really crazy this month, um, pretty much just still plugging away, getting the JIS updated, um. The abatement deadline is coming up, so I'm really crossing my fingers and holding my breath for that day to come without any crazy happenings. Um, but that's January fourteenth and then after that, it's right back into getting ready for April one of twenty twenty-two, which is crazy.
Great.
I would note that Caitlin is going to be carrying forward our, much of the work with our um, website. Transformation, the contact with that, I believe the committee anointed her with. Some of that work, so.
You weren't there that day, were ya?
I actually was, which is the sad part.
Nice job.
She was telling us what to do, we decided we'd keep that going.
Right. Jake, you got anything?
Well, November was uh, of course, an election month, um, this was actually a particularly fun election because we had six candidates. Um, going for, for three spots and one thing that I really admired about this election, and it doesn't happen with every election, is that everybody played fair. And everybody played kind and everybody played nicely and uh. As the person who, you know, facilitates these elections, I owe each of the candidates a debt of gratitude because. Honestly, and, and it's, it's unfortunate that I have to say this, but it's, it's certainly appreciated, it makes my life a whole lot easier. When uh, we're well-behaved, so to speak, so um, thank you to all of our candidates, the election did go well. Right now is a little bit of a slower time in uh, in my office. Uh, we've got petitions that are being circulated right now, so we're working on that and uh. Dog licenses are also due, we sent out reminder postcards today, so. Uh, if you haven't registered your dogs, this is your friendly reminder to do so before the end of January, so. That's all I have and my report is not as cheerful and pleasant as Caitlin's and I admit that and I'm.
Nobody, nobody's ever is, that's, that, that, hers is the best reading, so. Jim, do you have anything you wanted to talk about?
I would just like to say it's been very nice, uh, my crew and I have been able to come out of kind of the COVID fog of survival. And get some projects in motion and completed, we put a new network room on the second floor at the police department to accommodate the captain's offices going in there. So it allows to expand the wireless and other projects up there, we've installed brand-new patrol PC. Uh, devices in the new cruisers, that was our first time for us, we were able to work with a couple vendors and use new technology, which is great. Um, um, and get the website moving, I mean, the website's been stagnant for four years, so it's been very nice not to just survive day-to-day. Bring my crew in and work with the other department heads to make progress on some, some of the long-term standing projects.
Great, thanks, Michael, I see we got a boat still in the water down there, huh?
Unfortunately, yes, asking him to leave daily, but he's pretty stubborn.
Okay.
He's just uh, hanging out, once the ice starts flowing down, I think you'll have to wake up.
Okay, everything else good down there?
Yeah, everything's fine, um, and those floats are already off there, we, we. The uh, guy that won the bid uh, was coming up through with his crane barge today and it kinda was, uh, he said, well, can I load them? And if they don't prove it, I'll unload them and uh, I said, well, go for it, so after I asked uh, Rich and, and Sue, so. Um, he's sitting out in the harbor with all the, all the floats already on the barge, so.
I saw those loaded on there, they looked pretty cool, yeah.
Yeah, it, it was the easiest way to get them out of there I've ever seen, no problem.
Nice. Richard?
Thank you, and I'm sorry my report's not pretty, it's all bullet point, but I will be remiss if I did not thank every single. Other department head because all these meetings, there's every single one of them, an interaction with everyone. Caitlin, Jim, Luke for the website, um, DC Winchester um, with uh, Bucksport Bay Festival, uh. DC Denning and um, Public Safety Director Gagin for the um, meeting that we had today with Jacob for waterfront, um. So, and then all their staff, when we need something, everyone comes through, last Friday, um. Jay lent me a couple guys from the highway crew and we were able to get up the new banners that were placed up there, one of them got destroyed on the first day because of the wind. Uh, but that's been since replaced, Luke helped me, we did that yesterday, um, so. The team atmosphere, everyone, just like Jake said, with, with um, with the election, everyone playing nice, everyone's helping each other and it's just made all these other projects just. Go smoothly, so I just wanna thank everyone that I work with, I might not see you all daily, but I appreciate you all, so, thank you, and thank you to the council.
Well, I, and I wanna thank, I think, from the council also, um, you know, it's nice to hear you guys, I think a lot of the folks. Probably, I hope we're watching this, can appreciate the, 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 the good work and the hard work that everybody in the town does, a lot of it's behind the scenes and. They don't see a lot of people unless they stop in the town office or they see you walking around town, so. I know we do appreciate all you guys do and, and appreciate the hard work you put in and thanks for uh, thanks for all you do and thanks for giving us a little bit of time here tonight, so. With that, uh, Sue, go ahead with your report, please.
Okay, actually I have two tonight and I'm not gonna read both of them, um, the, the annual report I emailed to you um, earlier. And um, it's seven pages long, but it involves, and it's on our website, uh, under tonight's meeting. For the public as well, um, and it's a synopsis of our year and it's, it's probably a five-thousand-foot view because not. Anywhere near everything that we've done is in it, but. It addresses the goals and objectives and work done on those and then it talks about other items that the uh. Town has done and the biggest takeaway of doing this report every year is that. And particularly the last two years is how very much the town has accomplished in what is a very difficult environment. And that um. You really have some pretty amazing employees that work for the town of. You really have some pretty amazing employees that work for the town of Bucksport and who. Give a hundred and fifty percent every day, and the number of grants and the number of projects and the. The things that people can see and feel in touch, the new fishing dock, the new floats at the marina, the new retaining walls, um. Are are all examples of good work, um. But the other thing that I'm saying, and this is not blowing smoke, it's the truth, this work can't exist. If the elected officials of the community are not setting good policy and. Providing a supportive environment and letting the people do the work, and Bucksport has that. It has a council that. Does good work and is supportive of the people who are the boots on the ground, and. I will extend my thanks for all of the employees of Bucksport to all of you. Who get elected to do this work and it's poor pay and a lot of aggravation, I I know that. But it's very much appreciated that you provide an environment that allows us to do this work. In ways that benefits the community, so. That, thank you, and I, if you have any questions on the annual report, I'm happy to answer them, as I said, yet, I know that this is your norm. But if you were go to to go to many communities and ask them to write a report of what they did during the year, it would look nothing like this. Because it wouldn't, it wouldn't contain the. Long list of we got it done's that Bucksports does. Anyway, on to the regular one, which is, um, the town has been contacted by M D O T that they are reviewing the status of Central Street. As a state aid road. There are criteria and statutes that are used to make this determination, and we are in the process of providing information to M D O T. In response to their request, the deadline for our information to be provided to them is the end of February of twenty-two. At which time they will review that and make a determination. If the determination is that that road as opposed to a state aid road. They will work with the town to improve the condition of the road prior to the turnover. That said, there's nothing in statute that requires them to do anything to the road. That the determination of whether it's local or state aid is five criteria. At the state level, there's some other federal ones, but, um, but that's not. How they handle it, if it's determined to be a local road, they would work with the town to bring it to the standard that. Um, it wouldn't be a rebuild, but it would be to a standard. More than a shim coat, shall we say, in terms of the work that needs to be done on Central Street.
Sue, real quick, and 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 Sean, maybe where where exactly does Central Street end?
Ends right at the Milldale Road intersection, at Wood Seaford.
That's what I thought, yeah, thanks.
And that's one of the biggest, is that it goes to nowhere, it goes to all local roads. So, anyway, that's a work in progress, um. I would like permission from the council to do something nice for the employees for this holiday season. We have canceled our town employee, everyone gets together luncheon. Um, so there'll be nothing where where we can all gather together, individual departments will share lunch. Um, I'd like to be able to expend up to eight thousand dollars for employee recognition. Last year, the council approved this type of recognition, and we did grocery store gift cards, and we paid for department lunches. And we also still have some gift cards remaining from our Pay It Forward program. And I would like permission permission to give three of them each to the Bucksport Food Pantry and to Home to assist them in getting food items that. They don't get as part of their distribution, um, for this holiday season. I've been asked to do a Zoom meeting in January along with Rich Rotella and Sue Ann Craig, and I believe the Keys are involved too. For the Hancock County Democrat Group about how Bucksport managed to win the USA Today Award for Best Small Coastal. Town, um, it is another opportunity to tell our story, it's it's a Zoom, um, event. And I've also attached to the report that I sent you earlier, the updated statistics on responses to the Opera Fund Survey that we sent out. The top three remain a grant program for seniors, stipends for first responders, and senior meal plan support. And we are currently at three hundred and thirty responses at this time, which is thirteen point three percent of the total number of surveys that we sent up.
Thanks, everybody okay with Sue's request for the, uh, gift cards and the town employees?
I would take that out of contingency if that, that.
I figured that's where you would take it from, so, yep. Not hearing any dissension or, we'll go ahead, go ahead.
Pantry and home of those, the, we had some of those hundred and fifty dollar gift cards that weren't distributed the first time. Um, I think it would be a good use for several of those to go to the.
That that's going to to those organizations and then they can use them?
They can use them for, they. They sometimes have to go buy things at the grocery store depending on what they're distribute, you know, what they get for. Food, so it's a, it's an essence cash for them to do that with.
Yep. All right, thank you. Uh, next, we've got, uh, approval of permits, I believe, first is a parade of lights parade permit. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I might, um, just due to recent events around the country. Um, I want to assure the town that we have had several meetings on this. At public safety, and we have a few more to go, and we actually have, we do an instant briefing nights, I C S two oh one for every one of these. This one is eleven pages, and we have met several times, as I said, to go over this parade to keep everyone in town safe.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any idea how many entries we have so far, or, Rich, you getting ready to say something?
I'm going to look it up for you right now.
What's that?
While Rich does that, just a, a quick note, I will have to go back to agenda item ten. Once we do these licenses, I think we skipped over that.
We did, you can yell at me, it was my fault, I was more excited to listen to you guys talk than listen to me.
Understandably so, I mean, you know.
It's, I believe it's the most ever on record, there are sixteen already signed up.
Nice, and there's still time for folks to sign up, correct?
Yes, Chief, did we make a change to that due to the, um, incident that happened in Wisconsin?
You know, as long as we have the ballpark figure a day or two before, the idea was that we don't just have people showing up at the park and. Lockdown, they're trying to get in line, that's all.
Thank you. Um, we'll we'll finish up with the permits here before Jake yells at me anymore, um, McLeod's Restaurant Liquor License, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve, second.
Any questions or comments? So you're gonna need signatures on that one?
I have signatures on that one and the one that we skipped, so if people could stop by on Monday, we could. Get signatures, that would be great.
How would the council like to proceed on the? Did we vote on the parade of lights one? No, Jake, you got me all all messed up.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
All right, go ahead, Jake, I'll let you take it over for now, we got motions on both of them.
So, okay, Counselor Eastman, approve, Counselor Morrison. I think you're muted, Jim.
Which item am I approving?
Parade of Lights.
Parade of Lights.
Approved.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Bissonette?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counselor Ormsby?
Approve.
Counselor Downs?
Approve.
Counselor Rankin?
Approve.
Then McLeod's Liquor License, Counselor Eastman?
Approve.
Counselor Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonette?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counselor Ormsby?
Approve.
Counselor Downs?
Approve.
Counselor Rankin?
Approve.
We will go back to item ten, approval of quick claims, discharges, and deeds, uh, Sandy Magno and Brian Noes, map thirty-one. Lot sixty-nine, sewer lean from three twenty-six twenty twenty, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve, second.
Jake?
Counselor Eastman?
Approve.
Counselor Morrison?
Approve.
Deputy Mayor Bissonette?
Approve.
Mayor Stewart?
Approve.
Counselor Ormsby?
Approve.
Counselor Downs?
Approve.
Counselor Rankin?
Approve.
Next item is discussion items, not on the agenda, Sue, have you received any phone calls or emails or anything? Anybody from the council have anything they want to talk about, it's not on the agenda? Kathy?
Yes, um, we had a cemetery committee meeting on Tuesday. And I just wanted to give you a quick update, we discussed the Molton Cemetery, the damages there. Um, we have not heard back from the insurance company yet, we're just waiting to hear back on that. Um, the nine seventeen River Road Cemetery, um, the site has been all prepared, the perimeter has been defined. But the problem we're having, and we have a discussion right now, is relocating the stones from the Riverview Cemetery. Back to the nine seventeen, and the highway department cannot do that. Um, Jay has reached out to some stone people to see if they would do it, and we have not found anybody yet. That would be interested in doing it, so we're gonna put out an R F P. And see what we can come up with, so we can get the stones moved back and do a plaque, and so we can get that completed. So, that's kind of where we're at, at the moment, um, Oak Hill, we did discuss on Oak Hill too. And the insurance company will not cover the stones there, so, we, um, there was probably. Um, they thought there was eight damaged stones, but we also have a number of twelve or fifteen. So we're not sure how many stones that we will need to repair or replace, but we'll be. Working on that also at the same time.
Okay, thanks. Sue? You're you're mute, you're muted again, Sue.
As I, as I noted on Facebook, and as I told all of the council and the. San- Cemetery Committee, I made an error in that meeting, in the year that I noted. For the ancient burial grounds, um, I realized it right after the meeting, I notified the committee and. Um, the other person who had submitted information and, um, also. Facebook, I wanted to publicly apologize for that, I don't like making mistakes, no one's more embarrassed about it than I am. I've done everything I can to. Provide the correct information, and I did it. It was seventeen minutes after the meeting ended that I sent out the thing saying I, I made a mistake, that's the wrong year, so. Um, I just wanted to, in the. Spirit of transparency, I I did, and I've done what I could to correct it, so.
Thank you. Danny?
Is there any update from the waterfront committee?
The waterfront committee met today.
Yeah, I was, I was going to bring that up, Counselor Ormsby, we have met, uh, several times, um. I'm not sure if we're talking about the same thing, the committee that I'm talking about is the one, um, we're in charge. We were charged with updating the waterfront use policy. Um, not necessarily the things that are needed on the waterfront, but what this committee is looking at. Our policy and what sort of events and guidelines we can offer, and so we have met twice, we have updated the policy. Uh, and I asked town manager Lasar to put on a discussion item for your first meeting in January. Um, we're looking for the council's feedback on a couple of things specifically in regards to. Um, funding, basically public safety fees for, um. Town-sponsored events, private events, so on and so forth, so that it would be helpful to the committee to get kind of the councils. Kind of where you folks stand in regards to that, and so, um, your first meeting in January, I'd like to have a dialogue there.
And Danny, you're talking about the other waterfront committee, um, we're waiting on documentation from, uh, G E I consultants. Uh, they were gonna bring us some documentation, um, for the residency for the, um, uh, shoreline. Based off of another community, but we have not received that yet, I have been in conversation, uh, with Mr. Baman as of recent. Because of, uh, another program that we're working on. So, um, and if Jake's done, I guess I'll, if it's okay with the mayor, I will move on to the other stuff that we're working on, it's pretty exciting. Um, the lawsuit that we were hoping to get money for to cover the funds for the new town dock. Um, those funds are about a year away, and there's no saying if we will get even a penny from that. So, another opportunity presented itself on the E D A, and I have a meeting, uh, with Senator King, Senator Collins' office. Um, a person, um, with the E D A, uh, for a grant that would, um. Pretty much cover that project in the place of that lawsuit, so, um, it's more opera funding for tourism. Um, and there's some other programs as well that we can link up to it, so, um, to keep the cost minimal to nil for the town for that. So that's exciting, um, next week I should have a final report for the twenty-seven Main Street. Um, I did have a meeting, uh, with the committee, um, George McLeod, Ad- Adel Brizinas. Um, myself and the four main contingency, uh, there were a few areas in the report. And I had asked to have those cleaned up before I presented it to the town council, so my goal is to have that on the first meeting in January for you.
Great, thanks, Rich. Anybody else have anything? All right, next item is committee assignments. Um, I think the only committee thing that we have set for right now is the one on the twenty-seventh of January to do a walkabout out to the shelter, correct? You're still muted, Sue.
My apologies, we also had the community garden topic on that. That was the other one that was, had been proposed that we were. It had been requested for twenty-seven Main, we have the upcoming report on that, the discussion was if there were other sites in town that the. Council might willing to allow to be utilized for that purpose, that's also on that agenda.
Okay, yep.
Mr. Mayor, can we also add another thing, it's part of the safety committee minutes, um, when we meet, we're gonna provide those minutes for the town council. Um, but there was talk of, uh, a McDonald Street sidewalk that currently exists. Um, it was under new safety items, uh, three A one, um. Deputy, um, Chief Gagan and I, uh, met, and we thought that it should be brought to your attention to see if you want to maintain or discontinue the sidewalk. It's in disrepair, um, some of it's. Ask, some of it's paved, some of it's turned into grass, it goes only so far, and we thought we, uh. Have the, um, council, um, give us their feelings on that sidewalk right there.
Is that, is that, is that something, Rich, that can wait till the first meeting in February?
Yeah, that, yeah, I, it's gonna be under snow cover, so yeah, I mean, it can wait, um, it's just something that, we, I want you to know that we're gonna do that. Um, for you guys going forward, so that you're gonna know, um, and then there is one other meeting, uh, Monday night, it's the Community and Economic Development. Community meeting, the last meeting of the year, I sent the invitation out to all the counselors, we're gonna have a presentation by Aspire Golden Bucks. Um, and I encourage if any of you can attend, that that group is doing some great, great work, if you, it's a very light agenda that night. Starts at C P M, and it will be via Google meets.
Very good, thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
And our next full council meeting will be in person on January thirteenth. Um, must something, all hell breaks loose, but that's our plan to go forward with that, so we'll be. Back in the council, so. back in the council. So with that, next item is adjournment.
Some move.
Second. Everybody have a Merry Christmas, please. All those in favor?
Have a good holiday.
Have a great holiday, everybody. Thank you.
Sean had oops.